One. Welcome to our preview. When I'm around the handle, I can't resist the presence of recent effort.
This is the pre-meeting that all the citizens have been waiting for today since twenty twenty seven. We have a couple of meetings in September, December.
Good.
Okay, we have a press call. Wait until the morning on twenty six from eight AM until five PM. October the eighth. Well, this is that should be the part. October the eighth in Riverside Park from two PM, four PM until nine PM. October fifteen on Charleston Street, five PM, eleven PM. And March twenty fifth. Um, it's going to do a drive from five thirty to two.
Good, Councilman Carroll. Yes. Councilman Carroll.
Yeah. Something got found me last week, but we can talk about it later.
Public hearing. Today's public hearing is the possibility of funding standards to the Dallas Street. Eleven sixty-two time, which is. And.
Councilman, can you get?
Let me take some questions and other communications to the council. All of the foundations of Alabama provide information on the impact of the Alabama. Here at Harrow, um, for the demolition structure that was one oh three hundred.
Should we be, this one is fired up, but hopefully, um, hopefully, we've done enough to satisfy her. Have did, did you talk to her since I talked to her on Monday, Shayla?
No, I haven't spoken to her.
You have not?
I just was delaying the message to me from their line.
Can you talk a lot, I can use?
I said, the only communication that I received was from the Downtown Mobile Alliance regarding some level of assistance if they create all of hers.
Right, um, but she's still faced with the competing city departments. One morning, her tear down, one wanted her to leave it up. That's something we need to resolve here.
That's not, so, so. I think we probably got some facts going back and forth. We checked in, she's not in nuisance and abatement. She's not in nuisance and abatement, and we can sound more on that. Um, but she does have to follow the rules in the DDD. That, that's not something that the council or the administration can, can help. So she is, she, what, what she's dealing with is code violations rather than nuisance and abatement. We're not pushing her to tear down the structure, uh, in itself.
Okay, well, she has a fine, she's had, what, four court dates?
For code violations.
And everything else. And the DDD, from what I understand, they don't have a problem, they want her to save the property. So, the competing departments has, has caused a, some type of air confusion here. You know, one, one with code enforcement, as you say, and then the other one saying, no, you can't tear this down. She was the owner of the property, the only reason why she even started the demolition process is because of what code enforcement was saying about her structure. So, you know, there's, we, we need to kind of smooth that out to where we don't have an individual trying to do something she necessarily doesn't have to do. Uh, we're fortunate enough that we have found a way to, uh, get her some, some assistance with one portion of it. But we have to find a little bit more assistance for the back corner of that property, uh, which is, she's had two seals that broken half and a little bit of termite damage, which can be easily fixed. But the ma, the most, ninety-five percent of that structure is one hundred percent fine. It's only what the appearance on the outside corner actually looks like. It's really not bad house, I went in, myself spent thirty minutes in there. It's great property, roof needs to heal, but it's great property. I mean, the inside of the house still has tongue grew, last, the tongue grew spined siding, heart pine, which you don't see anymore. The whole house is done that way. So it's truly a, a historic architectural treasure if, if she gets it right, and, and we hope her get it right. As opposed to, I, I, you know, I don't know the right word to use here, unintended pressure that she necessarily didn't, didn't understand.
I want to make sure that the council's clear on this. There, there's no pressure from the city to tear down. The, the pressure from the city is to remedy the code violations. And it was, of course, she opted to say, I'm, I'm going to go tear it down, I want to keep my property. The Downtown Mobile Alliance got involved and, uh, and that's in, in reference to the DDD saying, look, you can't just tear this down, and that's what the ordinance is. I don't like the ordinance, but then again, I didn't write it.
Yeah, but it's.
What I want to make.
And speaking to the cities department also, the city department said, we don't want them to tear it down. So, and that was told by, to her from the cities department. Uh, a, and Fred Refree didn't get involved until after that. I, I've spent hours with this lady, so I know every detail. So let's, let's not, I'm not saying like, let's, let's, you know, I'm not trying to pull rug over it or cover it up. But we have to find a way for these two entities to work in harmony, whether or not, uh, uh, what do we call it? What's, what's the name of the new department, continual, what, what was the name of it, Shayla? The one that didn't want to tear it down, when we talked?
It, the, it is, it is the Consolidated Review Committee, which is a subset of Bill and Bill, but just to be clear.
Let me finish my statement, we need to make sure that those two departments work in harmony as opposed to kind of being a tandem, you know what I mean? When we do nuisance, nuisance abatement in this other department.
So they are, and I think Shayla can probably clarify.
Um, so as Mr. Woods articulated, um, and Jamie could probably go through this better than I. The, the property is in environmental court due to code violations. Um, and it, and it has been so for quite some time. Um, once she made the decision that she wanted to demo the property, because it is in the downtown development district, there is a demolition process. Um, and you have to file a permit, uh, with the committee making that request. Um, and it outlines very specifically all of the elements that an owner or applicant must satisfy, um, in order to receive approval for demolition. And so, once that permit was submitted, it's in the form of an application, um, it did not satisfy all of the elements of the, the DDD. So, um, she has a, a process, um, once that decision has been made by way of going before the Board of Adjustment to ask for a waiver. Um, but in terms of how the departments are working together, she has code violations, she made the decision to file for a permit, and that is where the Bill and Bill Department through the CRC gets involved. If it were a nuisance abatement, meaning on the demolition list, we are a part of that process on the front end.
Right.
The difference with this application again is that we're dealing with code violations, and the only reason why a building mobile gets involved is once a permit for demolition is filed. And that's essentially how the process works.
So it is up to the citizen to decide if she wants to either remedy the code violations and go through environmental court. Or, in the alternative, she can go through the demo process and say, I want to do this with the permit, but that is completely up to her. We are not pressuring her one way or the other. So we'll try to help her do that, through that process, and the two departments are working in tandem to be able to do so. But that's her decision.
Well, I guess we could finish this conversation at ten o'clock with her, because her perception is somewhat different. And again, you know, I always say this, it doesn't matter what our perception is, if the citizens in the city do not feel as if though our process is helping and more so hurting, then the perception outside is the one that rules and not the perception inside. So we have to do something where delicate issues like this are, are more of, uh, uh, have more of an easier path to follow than one that is somewhat confusing. Because even now, I'm looking like, you know, weight dependent here. I mean, if it were, if it were my property, you know, I'd want to do whatever I want to do with it. But as you all know, I'm an advocate of keeping and restoring properties of this nature, not tearing it down. So I'm on your side when it comes to keeping the property up. But the confusion is, is the process again. You know, how does she get through the process without feeling like she's been given the runaround from two different departments?
Right, and then there are more than just city departments involved here? I think that's where some of the confusion lies.
Well, the DDD plus the CRC and the nuisance abatement. So we have three different entities that are giving direction to one person.
And the court.
And, see, so it's, it, it, it's somewhat a hodgepodge here, but let's move on. I think we have resolution, so let's move on and talk for her.
Reggie Hill regarding point of order reconciling twenty twenty-three budget in chapter thirty-eight of the new code.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Do we know what this point of order is? Chris, have you seen it? Any idea what this is?
It's about courts. I don't, I don't know.
Terps, less than per, um, second, the council continues to support Jonathan Jeffrey, um, paying for first responders in the twenty twenty-three budget, and John K. Patrick has, um, canceled. C X resolution, cell number twenty-one eight twenty-two, authorized contract to give us pizza associates consulting premier for engineering services on twenty nineteen McRae Avenue, finance phase two project. Resolutions, cell number zero-nine seven seven seven, adopt twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, general fund capital fund, and inclusion, second front budgets.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Trump.
I distributed everyone after our finance committee meeting we had last week. Seems like there was consensus on some things and not consensus on others. So the original amendments I had to offer, there were five. There's still five on this list, but there are five different amendments. Amendment one is to reduce the transfer to Zoe City Off Course, increase performance contracts for veterans recovery resource for one hundred thirty-three thousand, then pull, uh, the remaining money from some attrition, community affairs, grants payroll, so on and so forth. That's amendment one. With the public outcry about moving money from Alta Point to, to fund veterans recovery resources. I think we had a general consensus that we'd rather not pull the money from Alta Point, but just come up with some money for veterans recovery resources. Amendment two is the million dollars from the general fund transferred to capital to create its own mine item for ditch maintenance, million bucks. Item three is to, um, fund groundwork mobile. That was actually left out of the, the budget as a whole, so the administration came forward with this opportunity to fund a rate of twenty-five thousand dollars. I believe what this is, yes. Uh, number four is regarding ethic, Councilman Carroll, is this, is this yours, Councilman Carroll?
Groundworks.
Yeah, no, no, Councilman Gillio, okay. Councilman, uh, Small, um, thirty-five thousand dollars transferred to United Methodist Services of Mission, Taylor Park. And then the last one is to fund ransom ministries. I'm sorry, groundwork was Mr. Carroll.
That's right.
Ransom ministries is the one that was, um, from the administration. So coming up with two hundred thousand dollars for ransom ministries. Apparently, that program has been successful. I've seen them out all over town. So those are the amendments that, um, I'll offer up today. I'll get a copy of these, maps of it.
Mr. President.
Uh, it's going to be Mr. Dave and Mr. Jones.
So, do you understand that rather than putting forward the amendments that you would originally thought about, you're, that's what we sold?
As much as I would like those amendments to be put forward and passed, I don't know that it serves a whole lot of, you know, good, uh, to, to put them forward. Although I think the process to follow through the office of professional responsibility and putting that money aside to consider it, whether or not we want to create a department is certainly useful and certainly something we should do. But it doesn't seem like I've got much support for that.
Well, I appreciate that, and, uh, we had a very, I think, productive finance committee meeting last week, and, uh, these, these proposals that you just read out up here, as you said, the consensus of the council to move forward, and I would support that.
Mr. Jones and Ms. Gregory.
Yeah, Ben, if you could pass to him. I am going to submit another amendment today to move six hundred thousand dollars from the performance contract to Alta Point and create a new six hundred thousand dollar line under resiliency office is earmarked for mental health services. And the reason for that, last week, there was a lot of discussion about this, and after the city council meeting, I got a lot of phone calls, emails. One of which y'all got on Friday from the, um, the ARC president of the board, and we'll reference that later. I don't know, is Mr. Holmes here in pre-council today? I also did a lot of research, because the questions I was trying to get to, I was blocked from bottom to top. And the research that I did proved to me, every performance contract that we let in the city, if we pulled that money away, it would have significant repercussions to the organization that we provide that money to. It would impact their operations outside of Alta Point. Every year that we have provided, provided funding to Alta Point, in twenty eighteen, they put seven point four million dollars profit in the bank. This is from their website, altapoint.org, this is where I pulled the data from. This is Terps' own financials. Twenty nineteen, they cleared seven point two million dollars in profit. Twenty twenty, they cleared eleven million dollars in profit. They spoke to us last week about the impact of two hundred thousand dollars. They have a hundred and twenty-five million dollar operating, that's point zero one six percent of their operating budget. The money that we provide is going into the bank where it should be going, and, and this comes on the back of them reducing mental health services. They're cutting, and, and I'll lay this out at, at the city council meeting. There's no way that I can sit here and vote for a budget and give six hundred thousand dollars to an organization that's putting that type of money in the bank. It's not right. This is a nonprofit organization, and, and for us to give money that's going to go to the bank instead of being used in the services that we expect it to be used with is not the right answer. Thank you.
Counselor, uh, Ms. Gregory.
Yeah, I have a, just a couple of questions, Ben, you may be able to help me with this. On, um, and I appreciate you doing this too, my love. On, on, on the first one, so. Oh, thank you, Bob, appreciate you doing this for us and working with the council to get these amendments. Always, it's good to have the administration and council working together on this.
Looking at the, uh, the spreadsheet, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so you, so you put that together.
Bob wasn't highlighting it though.
No, that was because I.
Not I, here.
That's because I, I made a black and white copy. And the, and the, the finance committee chairman is the one who gets the highlights. We all, all the rest of us are.
That's, that's the council working with the administration.
Just, just a couple of questions, um, is Zoe City on course? Has anybody spoken to the board over there to let them know that this was coming, to say that they're not blindsided?
I, I have, I've got a guy on the board that I talked to, and they were asking for this actually, before this ever even happened.
Fee increase, yeah.
Not after the transfer, so they need to be, made way of the transfer.
Yeah, that, that's the question. Fee increase is one thing, but a transfer of funding is, is another. So I just want to make sure that they know what's coming so that they're not blindsided.
This is level funding from last year.
Yeah.
You know, so this is, this isn't taking anything away from what they were funded at last year.
And they can make it up.
It's an enterprise account, you know, they have an enterprise account, and they have the ability to offset some of these costs, and that's been the point, all along with often this amended up. And it seemed like a good opportunity to put it towards veterans recovery resources.
On, um, on number four, I'm not familiar with, um, some of the program that Dr. Gillio at Elementary School was.
Yeah, uh, about three, or probably about five years ago, Manson and myself, we had a Boys and Girls Club, uh, in our district that did not have no summer funding. So the city went ahead and put thirty-five thousand for the summer program. But the past, um, year and a half, um, has not been a program at Gillio Elementary School, and I don't even know where the thirty-five thousand went from last year. That did not go in, you know, into the district. So I transferred that to Taylor Park, which Taylor Park service, uh, has a summer program, which serves from Williamson High School all the way to B C Rain. And so at least we know that thirty-five going at this year.
Yeah, I have a similar line item in District Two, I chose not to move it, hopefully Florence Howard will get off the stick next year.
It might not have been.
Well, next year will be different.
And I appreciate also finding some, um, funding for ransom, happy, happy to see that. And, um, all I've gotten was really good reports on what they're doing, so, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, um, Judge. On the, uh, the budget, the resolution says that budgets are adopted, we're going presumably to attach something to the back of that. You also need to amend the language of the resolution to stay with the attachments, as per attached or something like that.
Just a kind of a housekeeping on this, um, is it better to do individual amendments, vote individually, or we can do all of them together?
Then, no, individually.
You want to do everything individually?
Yeah, I mean, in case one of them.
Yeah, of course, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I do.
Just do it by number, amendment one, amendment two, I don't think there's any need to read them all out.
I think there's a procedural issue with that. Individual, right.
Write them all out and go down at the same time, but it just depends on who's in the.
And we said that takes five votes to approve an amendment.
Five to approve amendment, four to approve the budget.
I think in the future, we need to relook that too. If it's a budget issue, I think it should be four votes, but I think we need to revisit that in the future.
That would be changing, it's odd, yeah.
Well, so do we, we, we need to go back to the state, look at that. It doesn't make sense when we're talking about budget items, it takes more votes than, than it does change the budget. That, that's, that's a future discussion, man.
Well, if you just go to court, as I already changed it last time, from my understanding. And not, and other council members, the name of the administration.
Zero one twenty-three, authorized to give the boss for construction of McRae Avenue. Zero eight eight twenty-four, to wire this field, that's true. Zero eight eight twenty-five, to wire this field, to carry three thirty-four. Zero eight eight twenty-six, to bring the work to the various areas. Zero eight eight seventy-seven, to work harder, to S H I International, for starting the process for N O C. Zero eight eight twenty-eight, to work the sound system equipment for loading arm and wiring arms for garbage truck. Zero eight eight twenty-nine, to work the W government furniture for gas masks and filters for the need. Zero eight eight thirty, to work the C W government for I P S Public Services Department. Twenty-one eight thirty-one, authorized contract, construction for experience, review of the art or outlaw convention center.
Mr. President, this one, I looked for the scope working here, is, is this just painting and like minor little concrete repairs?
No, this is, uh, basically re-waterproofing the exterior on the Riverside of the Convention Center. They've got to remove actuarial courses of the, uh, exterior brick and wall to redo the flashing and waterproofing on that, on about three or four sections on that, on that side of the convention center.
But it's not associated with, uh, the dock issue that they're.
No, no, no. This is on the building, because we've had water intrusion coming into the building on that side, which is creating damages on the inside of the building. So the remedy is, we've got to remove that, redo all the flashing waterproofing on that side.
The, uh, in the description, it says painting. Convention Center painting.
Originally, there was some, and we removed that from the scope, so. Thank you, Jim.
Twenty-one eight thirty-two, authorized contract to provide McDonald, a band L O C for special financial management improvements. Twenty-eight thirty-three, except right twenty, for the Hallview Road, different progress road intersection improvement project. Twenty-eight seventy-eight thirty-four, approved certificate of community success and embed that, a band to operate anyone in circles. Consent resolution being introduced, zero nine eight thirty.
Mr. President.
Thomas Jones.
Yeah, if we can go back to that one, Chief, the TV captain, you wanted us to lay this over ninety days, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll move that we lay thirty-seven, that's eight, three, four, over for ninety days.
Consent resolutions, zero nine eighty, thirty-six financial funds to go to capital improvement fund. Thirty-seven eight thirty-seven, married member, total eighty-four, ladies and gentlemen, rest of the town, to the park, the diamond market, Ocean Mo. Forty-eight thirty-eight, eight thirty-nine, eight forty, to fix the cost of the installation of the structure. Sixty-eight forty-one, for the one special bonus to the administrative services employee of the month. Sixty-eight forty-two, eight forty-three, eight forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty-one, fifty-two.
Sixty-eight fifty. I'm about to tell you. Water. I've been working with power shields on this, and, uh, this. This, I believe, is an earlier request, and it doesn't represent what my current understanding of the power shields is with respect to.
Yes.
That's that money accounted for in the, move into the C I P. You're going to have money between you.
I predict it's next year. I predict it was next fiscal year.
No.
So this is money is being in cover already, how will that work, will you lose this money?
I want to see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Can't, see, can't we just add this to the, uh?
Make the amendment.
Ta, table.
No.
Yeah, okay. Can we do that, and then it can move it to cattle?
Whatever this amount is when that, when that comes up, just to make.
Okay, so, um. Contributing procreations to Mobile Alumni Chapter, outside, uh, the Miss Alabama Foundation, this Mobile State Organization, John Thor High School, Omega Community Outreach Team, just for developing practical doors, United Met, this interstate mission, and local meeting. Shabba U Temple, Mobile Regional Savior Community Center Foundation, and Alabama Youth and Years Association. So, the service of purpose and a full pay. Resolutions being introduced, zero one eight fifty-three, authorized to bring in the work Mobile Area Horned Stores, system for regular acting. Zero one eight fifty-four, authorized foreign trade zone, operation, international warehouse, and ship, N O C. Zero eight eight fifty-five, food purchase order to G O L C for body armor plates. Eighty-six thousand three hundred forty-four dollars. Zero eight eight fifty-six, food purchase order to Interface Services for new carpeting, M R T, thirty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-six thousand ninety-one cents. It's zero eight eight fifty-seven, authorized purchase order to Nation Ford, Mobile Ford, twenty twenty-three Ford, car open hand, fifty thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. Zero eight eight fifty-eight, authorized purchase order to Samson Equipment Ford, three twenty-one, side load garbage trucks, one million seventeen thousand six hundred twelve dollars. Zero eight eight fifty-nine, authorized purchase order to Samson Equipment Company, four two twenty-two, side load garbage trucks, seven hundred four thousand three hundred twelve dollars. Zero eight eight sixty, food purchase order to truck, put in sales for plastic truck, one hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars. Zero eight eight sixty-one, food purchase order to operations for twelve ultrasound probe devices with cloud storage, prior administration, thirty-three thousand sixty-four dollars.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the administration what a ultrasound probe device with cloud storage is. Do I know what that is?
I swear to God.
Know what it is? Ambulance.
Said it's for an ambulance.
It's an ultrasound device, we would be the first in the state to receive these ultrasound devices that would help, I'm not a paramedic, so bear with me here, but for example, when you have seniors in the front of the van and it's for a little bit, use this ultrasound device to prove, and you also look at fentanyl and other, you know, other things on, on the scene or in the ambulance, and then they can relay that information to hospitals and to doctors so that they can prepare for treatment ahead of arrival.
Do our medics have to be ultrasound techs?
There would be a training that would take place and I, I know that Chief Cox or Chief Lady can speak to that in the council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Candace.
Zero eight eight sixty-two, approved purchase order to Exxon Enterprise for two virtual reality headsets and phones, and eighty-four nine thousand five hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. President.
Ms. Brown.
What are we doing with virtual reality headsets? Got video games set up somewhere?
So we currently use, we only sell headset, I mean. That is great. As part of our DUI training, when our officers go through DUI training, they, it's like a virtual reality class they go through so they can make sure that they know how somebody would react in there, how somebody under the influence would act. And also, we will use them as part of our mental health training as well. This is, these are being, the funds will be reimbursed back to the city, it is in collaboration we have with our mental health co-response training that we're doing with Altapoint currently. It just gives us the opportunity to have guys go through different scenarios utilizing the headsets as law enforcement, also how to deal with people with mental health. So it's just part of our training.
Is there, there's going to be a response? So if I'm in the training and I say something, somebody's going to respond back to me in the, in the virtual environment?
Yes, sir. Sign up.
No joke.
Yeah.
No joke, I mean, at least if you don't do that, do the, get the CPR and the bike training, you know, ride the bike for Monte Girl, I mean, it's an experience. I did it to Monte Girls in a row.
I know, you described it very clearly to us that you were worn out out of.
Well, I tell you what, Doc, just don't ride with Doc if he's retired, but I mean, at least do it, man, I mean, it's, it's an experience.
Zero eight eight sixty-three, authorized purchase order for global industries for furniture for Infinity Circle, Gulf Coast Technology Center, one hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred seventy thousand ninety cents. Zero eight eight sixty-four, approved purchase order, Leo's uniforms is supplied for Infinity badges, eighty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars. Twenty-one eight sixty-five, authorized contract for Westwood Plaza, N O C for lease of litter collection with staffed employees.
Mr. President.
Ms. Brown.
This is probably for Casey, but this is a, this seems like a unique new thing that's being tried. I guess the first question would be why Westwood Plaza and is, is there an intent to try to, to say this is somewhat successful and that the people actually dump their trashcans and stuff to roll it out into other locations in the city?
Both, yes. So, so why Westwood Plaza? Because they volunteered, they stepped up first and so Casey worked diligently with them to create this leasing of the garbage cans to them. So it's, it's, it's their initial effort and if it works well, it could be, you know, this would serve as a pilot. And it's so we can reduce litter overall, especially in shopping centers, because that's a big part of resiliency for us.
And then, what, what are the, I, I haven't seen a picture or anything of what these receptables look like, are they, are they permanently affixed, are they just some?
Because this is a test, we're using kind of cheap trashcans comparatively. If it works, then we'll work with all the, the shopping center owners to pin a trashcan that all of them feel could be a uniform purchase through the system. Because it's, it's essentially a leaseback and the legal team helped develop this, did a ton of research to make this happen, but it's essentially a leaseback program where we will put the cash out first, they will reimburse us to buy those trashcans back, but it's a better system for them to be able to, to incorporate the costs across their systems. So long term, it'll be a nicer trashcan, it will not have the City of Mobile logo on it, mainly because it will be the responsibility of the shopping center owners, it'll be a good looking shop, a good looking trashcan that will be placed, if it works out, if it goes well, it'll be placed in every, in every shopping center, maybe even something that we're managing, if, if we can work that out.
Yeah, the emptying of them, they're staffed adequately to handle all of that, I think that's probably a pretty big component.
Well, Westwood Shopping, so, and there's a, and I can send y'all, I don't know if it was a part of the packet that y'all got, but we've got essentially a test pilot project that we're doing, where they're going to monitor the, the parking lot for thirty days with their cleaning company, pick up trash, put it in a dumpster, wait, and then once we install the trashcans, they will have two dumpsters, one that's with, that comes from the trashcan and one that comes from the brown. Their guys are going to, their, their Burton Properties is doing the reload and making this donation to see if this will work, to run this test pilot project. So I think we're going to see, does it work, how much trash is in a trashcan versus how much is on the parking lot, and really be able to understand what that does and what that could mean for our shopping centers in all of the cities of Mobile. Will people use trashcans?
Yeah, well, thank y'all for doing it.
Casey, are the, the trashcan is going to be just throughout the parking lot, just various locations?
Yeah, they've, they've got a plan for how to do it and we talked for a very, very long time, trying to figure out the right place to do it, and look at different shopping centers, and I think what, what Philip and his team want to do, put it where they're, where y'all stay, not get run over, they are not having any trashcans, so that's a little bit of the challenge, we'll probably be sandbagging them, but we're very likely to have a day where we can roll it out, we'll definitely want y'all to come.
So who is responsible for keeping them empty?
Burton Properties.
Burton Properties, yes.
Copper Public Currents, forty-one eight sixty-six, copper covered earth to consider who is typically the public that needs an assessment to be defended by the public, welcome close fellow tours to operate and help the private service, scheduled October letter announcement.
All right, Counselor. Ms. President.
Um, Sean, can you, um, we've been getting a lot of phone calls for on the license again at Safeway, and I know we had an issue with people, we don't miss them, but is it, is that the same issue that's?
This is my first time hearing it.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Ms. President. Ms. Karen.
Uh, can I get an update on when we're going to take care of that big old pothole on Dolphin Street?
We're working, the one right by Squid Ink, right before Squid Ink, that one?
No, sir, the one just before Catherine Street in the inside lane that's, I actually went and measured it, six foot seven and five eighths by four foot three and a quarter with about eight inches of depression in the center of the street. It's big, big hole, needs to be addressed. Can we please, as a matter of fact, the city actually, after I complained so much, somebody's gone out, actually sprayed it in pink and crossed it out so people, I guess, could see it coming down the street. So I'm guessing nobody else has done that but us. Also, the one that is at Monterey and Government Street, that is another mess, it's pretty bad, and now there's one that's really bad. I wouldn't be talking to you unless they were really bad. There's another one at Lafayette in Government Street in the outside lane, which, you know, if you know traffic, that's the lane closest to the curb, that when you turn right, right there, it's pretty big, it's probably about sixteen inches deep right there. So let's, please, I keep asking that we address those, I mean, these are ones that are issues, you know, the others we could probably wait and take care of, but these are issues.
Do you have a best summary for that?
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure it's a hundred of them, other than me complaining about them, but I'd be glad to write a, a paragraph or two on them, a request, as opposed to just a verbal request, because I understand sometimes in municipal politics, it doesn't exist unless it's in writing, so I'd be glad to do that too if needed.
Mr. President.
Ms. Johnson.
I've got some issues with Pioneer's neighborhood and I guess there was a trash pickup that was missed and the folks called and they said, just leave your trashcan out by the road, they'll come back and pick it up. We've got a great neighbor in there who loves to call the city when things are not right and he has been calling the city complaining about trashcans being out and they're issuing now citations to those people that were told to leave their trashcans out. So I'm going to go talk to the gentleman that is calling in the city, I guess he does this quite often, but I don't know how we can flag something like that in the system, so if you start getting phone calls about a trashcan that's out that was, you know, told to keep it out, and how we keep from, from doing that. It, it's becoming problematic, I guess it's happened a couple of times in there, but if we can look at that, that would be great. Again, I'm going to go talk to the guy and hopefully I can resolve the situation if you can be a little bit patient with the neighbors on that. But the other thing is, I don't know if anybody here knew Victor Birch, he was very well-known throughout the city in running circles, marathon, running, worked for the post office, sixty-one years old, he was killed in a head-on collision Sunday morning. I'd love to do a moment of silence for him this morning.
Good day to you, Ms. Karen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to commend this issue around the job she's doing, assisting in many of these issues we've had in District Five, very much like the ones that have been discussed in the staple this morning. And I'm able to get in contact with this Brown and point out problems and either she reports back to me or she gets in touch with the constituent, and I can't snap my fingers, but if I could, that's how quickly I would indicate that she's taking care of these problems. And I'd just like to commend her publicly with the great job she's doing. Thank you.
And I'll have to add my thanks too, because of late I sent her a listing of issues in some neighborhoods and some of them are repeat, so, you know, just appreciate the help that you were giving us and try to get some of these things resolved. And if we're not able to resolve them, at least to get back with those citizens and explain what the status is and why we can or cannot resolve the issues to their expectations. So the communication is really welcome. So thank you, Keisha, and you want to introduce our new employee while we are talking? Yeah?
So, and I just want to introduce our new Community Affairs Manager, this is Denise Walker, and I'll let her kind of give a little background herself.
Good morning, members of the council, my name is Denise Walker and I'm pleased to serve the citizens of Mobile. I relocated from Georgia, so I served as Legislative Officer for Fulton County, which is one of the largest counties in Georgia, and I served as Assistant Director of Community Affairs at Embry University. So I was born here in Mobile and I'm back here, so I'm happy to be here.
Welcome back.
Welcome.
And she's a member of the.
Ms. Karen.
Uh, Mr. President, at your request, I'd like to schedule the Administrative Services Committee meeting for next Tuesday, the fourth, according to me, that day too.
Mine is scheduled for October the twenty-fifth.
All right, next Tuesday, the fourth, the meeting with following council meeting to discuss the proposal by spec and the master plan for the city.
Anything else from the council? Anything from the administration?